Welcome to the East Bridgewater School Committee meeting of Tuesday, August 20th, 2024. And if you'd all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And as always, thank you, E.B. Kim, for recording our meetings not only for us, but for all the townspeople that are not at these meetings but still have access to the information. And I want to thank everybody before we turn over to Superintendent Legault. The idea would, we're going to change around our format for our meetings. Oh, I have to open a motion to meet, motion to open the meeting? Forget what I just said.
So moved.
Someone can second?
Second.
Great, okay.
Give your answer.
No, thank you.
All in favor?
Hi. Okay, so changing the format, ideally to make us more efficient and better use of our time, but not to rush us, not to just move through things without thinking and thought. A big part of it will be getting the material out to you ahead of time, at least a week, 10 days ahead of time, so you'll have time to look through it and forward any questions, depending on what they are, either to myself or to Liz, so that, again, under the efficiency side, if we, maybe some questions can be answered even before the meeting, but maybe some things in the meeting, people are already ready for it. So, oh, there was a question about this, and here's the answer, just so that we can get the information and move, move forward. And under the heading of changing our format, thank you all for sending me your suggestions. I'd like to think most of them are reflected in tonight's agenda. There's a few things that might take the next meeting or so to, to get to, but I have them all. But for some, if you think for any reason I've missed something, well, me and just, just reach out to me. The, and I just wanted to emphasize that, that homework piece, since we're in schools, that homework piece about taking a look at the materials ahead of time, just, again, to make things move smoothly for everybody's sake. The, as you saw, well, next meeting, which will be September 10, we'll get into the rotation of the, the finance presentation, the curriculum, the student services, and the idea is 10 minutes of presentation, 10 minutes of questions. It sounds a bit aggressive, but again, the idea is let's, let's make it work and do the best we can with it, just so that we can, we can move through it. Whereas when we had two meetings a month, we'd do finance one month and strategic plan another. So we'll, we'll break those up in, in a different way. One of the suggestions we had was to move public comment earlier in the meeting, so if someone's sitting here, they don't have to wait till the end of the meeting to ask their question. Is, is that a contentious point with everybody? I mean, I didn't send it out there to, you know, to get people's feedback. We're reminded periodically that we're a meeting in public, it's not a public meeting, but by the same token, if somebody has a question, we want them to have access to us. So, any discussion about that? I know you had brought it up then, I thought was, you know, a good point. To that end, I did purchase, I didn't bring it with me tonight, I did purchase a clock, a time clock, because it hasn't been an issue in the past, but who knows, if there's something controversial that comes up in the future, and we limit people to two minutes or three minutes, and they say, hey, you never did that before, and how do I know it's two minutes or three minutes? So, we, we'll talk more about it, but I have that available if, if we, we think it's going to be relevant and useful. So, we can, if, if I don't hear any other objections, I would move public comment up probably, I'll, I'll look at the format for the next meeting, but it'll, it'll be further up in the agenda, if that's okay with everyone. And I'll, I'll speak with Superintendent Legault, but one of the other points that came up was to be nice to, on a periodic basis, recognize teachers and students whenever we can. We've done in the past, but it'd be nice to have it sort of as, if it's not a regular occurrence, at least it's, it's on the agenda to, to be looking for. And the, we'll, we'll give, a, a regular part of the meeting will be subcommittee updates. Sometimes the subcommittees won't have met, and it's nothing to update, you just say, okay, no update for this committee or that committee. But if there is a, has been a committee meeting and there's something to report, do it briefly and just bring the rest of the committee up to speed with it. And I sent out a list of the MASC worksheets, workshops, we can talk about that a little bit later. But one of the other things, I just wanted to check that, it's right here. The, I just want to make sure everybody, particularly those who are relatively new to the committee, do you, are you getting a lot of the mailing that we get from MASC? If not, no?
Would it be at home or here?
If we go to your home? No?
To home? No, I haven't gotten anything.
I've gotten one thing, and that's it.
Okay, this goes back a bit, so I'll, I'll double check on that, because what, if I find this information, sometimes it's a lot, but one of the things I find is helpful is you realize, oh, we're not the only ones dealing with this. We, sometimes we get so focused on what's in front of us, and we think it's unique, but when you read some of their material, you realize, oh, this is across the whole state, and it just, just kind of helps to put it in, into perspective. So, I'll double check and make sure.
I can follow up with them directly, you don't have to do that.
Okay.
I'll, I'll ask, make sure I'm getting whatever appropriate mail is.
Yeah, they should have both of your addresses, and they just go to your home.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. And one of the other things I mentioned, and Michael, at the beginning, was the AP warrants and the payroll warrants. My preference, although you, you certainly can overrule me, is that I'd like us to either sign those prior to the meeting or after the meeting. To me, it's always a little bit disconcerting to me that, as we're passing them around, I know we have to sign them, but I don't know, to me, it, it seems to me should be before the meeting or after the meeting. So, if it's a problem, we'll, we'll modify and change it. But I know right now, the whole pile of them in front of Mike that have to be signed, so maybe before you leave tonight, if you just take a look at it, it just takes a few minutes to sign off on it. And one of the workshops, it's not on that list, but as you know, we, last year, we introduced Superintendent Eval software, which I think is going to be a huge step forward for us. And I know myself, I went through the training once, but I'd, I'd like to go through it again. And, and the company seems very cooperative, right, Michael? If, if we asked her for a Zoom meeting, I'm sure she'd set it up, and it doesn't take too long. Just kind of a refresher, just to remind, okay, here's where all the data is, here are the goals, and somewhere by next April, it'll be up to us to fill out our own individual responses to that, and we collect them and get to present them to Superintendent Legault. And we do it now in April, so that when there's the election, there aren't new people sitting here saying, well, I don't, I, I can't do it, I just got here. And, okay, and just a, just a heads up that our next meeting is September 10. I apologize for that. Originally, I thought, okay, we'll do the third Tuesday in every month, but I'm going to be away on the 17th, and I, I felt bad for that first evolution of that meeting, to say, okay, Becky, good luck, you know, so if you don't mind, we'll do it on the 10th, and then after that, it'll be the third Tuesday in every, in every month unless we need some sort of special meeting. So, with that, I apologize for taking so long, I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Legault.
Do you want to do public comment first?
Uh, we can, if somebody's here for public comment, sure. Anyone? Well, wait a minute, Charlie, I, I don't know, you constitute public, but okay, all right, come on. You have the microphone right up here at the end of the table here.
Thanks very much for the opportunity. I know you're counting days and probably now down to hours at this point for opening. I did see on the agenda the discussion of the administrative retreat about the possibility of an HR DEI, DEI position. Not here really so much to discuss the merits of having that position here at East Bridgewater Public Schools or the town as a entire or whatever, just, I guess, a couple of fiscal updates that the committee may not be aware of that have occurred since town meeting, neither of which is good news. First, that the Plymouth County Retirement System has extended its schedule for fully funding the retirement system. We were hoping that, and planning, that they would be fully funded in 2029, and that in 2030, that would free up several million dollars for operating costs, capital costs, putting money back in reserves, a number of possibilities. That's not going to happen. They've extended it by two years, and not, it's not a good thing in the sense of you say, okay, well, we'll have lower payments over six years rather than higher payments over four. It's the same schedule, just for two more years. We're going to be seeing seven or eight percent increases each year for another two years beyond what we were expecting. The reasons for that are that the mortality table that they used has now been updated, so that they've accounted for the fact that people are living longer, even despite what we had seen through the pandemic. Second, that payrolls, not so much for East Bridgewater, but for many of the communities and units that are in the retirement system, have grown faster than they expected, which means that you now have to cover higher salaries and wages for future retirees than they expected. And then third, as much as the market has done well, relatively speaking, this year, they can't take that into account yet. As much as 2023 was a banner year, 2022 was not. And so when they did their recalculations for the returns, they had to factor that in. All those things made it, as far as they could see, as impossible to fully fund the system by when they expected to in 2029. When we put together a budget for 2025, we said, we're going to start drawing down on the reserves that we have from our stabilization funds, we're going to be using free cash and such at a certain rate. And one of the things we found out from our bond advisors and the bond rating agencies is that we're very close to a tipping point for our credit rating, in that by doing so, in decrease, because we just bonded, for instance, $1.5 million for the feasibility study for Central Elementary School, but we're getting very close to that point. That continued use beyond what we are now hoping, or we're scheduling to use during the next four years is going to have a negative impact on our credit rating. Doesn't mean immediately, doesn't mean, you know, the next dollar that we do, but if we continue in that direction and draw down the reserves more than what we expected to, the chances of our credit rating going down worsen. What it means, though, is because we've now have to use those reserves over six years rather than four, the amount of reserves we can use each year is probably going to be decreased, because we don't want to dip further than what we expected to during those four years, which means our resources to fund operations and capital expenditures during those years are not as large as we expected to. The second, and this was news to me, just because it was just yesterday, the treasure collector told me, I think you may be aware that obviously there are a number of drugs, such as Ozempic, that are seeing higher usage, more people are using them for more conditions, they're fairly expensive, and yet they're covered under our health plan, under the GIC health plan, and I suspect most health plans. So, our treasure collector had, had been at Treasure Collector School, one of the things that came up was, of course, health insurance, because most treasure collectors handle the health insurance for their communities. And what they were told was, you should expect right now, and this is many months away, in the sense of the GIC won't publish the rate increases for fiscal '26 until March, but we should be thinking and estimating on a 10% increase for health insurance for fiscal '26. That represents something on the order of $450,000 to $500,000 increase from fiscal '25 to fiscal '26, which is not something we were expecting. You know, we were going to expect increases certainly, but not to that extent. What all this means is that whether it's the police, or the fire, or the library, or the council on aging, or highway, or the schools, adding new positions is going to be more difficult than we ever anticipated. As I said, I'm not here to discuss the merits of having a position, just the finances, and that we're many, we're still a number of months away from any department submitting a budget, schools or anybody else. But I, my hope is that you will take that into account when submitting a fiscal '26 budget, that we knew we were going to be tight during the next four years, now we're going to be even tighter during six years. It's going to be a challenge to maintain the level of services and number of positions, be competitive and pay with other communities, all that with our limited resources, so that you're going to, you and everyone else will have to make some decisions about what are priorities in terms of, do we pay people more, do we add more positions, or what combination are we going to be doing for personnel costs? I just wanted to give you a heads up on all that, because, as I said, you're still a few months away from approving a budget, but you should take that into consideration. And as much as, you know, the retirement system, you know, I've talked to departments about that already, the health insurance information was new, and I was fairly sure that the information in the retirement system, while it's known by a number of people, wasn't necessarily known by the full committee. And that's all I had to say for tonight.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thanks, Charlie.
Not the greatest of news, but it's news we need to hear. So, thank you. Okay? Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll move on to Superintendent's corner.
Thank you. Welcome back, everybody, staff, students, school committee, welcome back, parents, community members to our '24, '25 school year. We are getting ready to our new teachers and our staff. They are in the buildings, they're starting to come in and get their rooms ready. We saw a lot of new faces at all three buildings today as we walked around. We had stepping up programs all over the district today. It was nice to see the third graders out at their lockers for their first time. It was nice to see seventh grade here, the principals are here, they certainly can join in in a moment and speak, and know that when I was over talking to Mrs. Byrne today, there was 90 kindergarten, kindergarteners there and, and a full staff. So, it's really nice to see everybody excited about coming back to school. Just a quick turf and track update, I've never seen a company work so quickly, do so well. The conditions, I think, have been fairly great over the summer, very hot, but we haven't had the monsoon weather that we did in prior summers. It looks like they are on time. My understanding, they are on time, and we may even be a little ahead of time. I don't want to give anybody any false hopes that we're going to have a football game in September, but we are hopeful that we may be able to get a home, home game late in September, maybe early October. But it looks great, it's coming, they'll be starting the track, and it's really neat to see them. If, if you didn't watch, if you haven't seen any of it, I hope that they have one of those cameras out on the field that does a daily and repetitive, and so that we can see it in, in the time lapse from beginning to end, and just see how fast they went, because it was amazing, the day after graduation, watching them pull in and start pulling up the turf. So, we had a summer, we had the administrative retreat last Monday and Tuesday. On the first day, Dr. Williams and I spoke mainly on instruction, the mission statement and vision, thank you very much. We talked to the principals about that, they want to bring it back to their school councils, talk about a little bit about the mission and the vision statement. We talked about the strategic plan. Is it clear? Is it, what's our timelines? Are we ahead? Where are we on the plan? And we'll be start, we're going to upload all that information on ClearGov, and it'll be up on our website. We talked about, did our, where are we with hiring? Where are we with resignations? We've had a few resignations, I got two today. It happens right at the end. Some people go into a totally different field than education, which I, one was that, and one went into wants to be an administrator. So, you can't, you can't, you know, slate people for leaving so late, I wish, I wish they told me in June, but they didn't. So, principals are actively looking and actively having interviews on a daily basis. We're not that far behind. I do have this sheet, I'm going to pass it out to you, we are missing a few. I asked that these sheets come back to me. These are personnel sheets, they are, they have on staff names on them and buildings that new teachers will be in, the reasons why they're here, whether it's a retirement resignation, therefore, I'd like you to look at them and then hand them back, please, because they are personnel and they are confidential. Well, the administrative team, we did team building with a life coach, Carrie Stack, she came in, I think, prior to COVID, we kept her through COVID, and we've brought her back a few times. She's a ball of energy. What, what her message was, what our message was, is that we're climbing a mountain every day, and we may never reach the top of the mountain, but as far as you get every day is successful, and that you need to remember that it's okay to take a minute as an administrator, as a principal, especially as a principal, that if you need a minute to take a deep breath, to tell someone, hey, listen, that's a great question, I'll answer you tomorrow, let me get you the answer to that question instead of just coming forward and say, I've got the answer to it. So, she was terrific. And then on the second day of the retreat, we had both sets of attorneys. One of our attorneys does our student affairs and special education, and IEPs and 504s, that is Murphy Hesse Tumi and Lehane, and that's Alicia St. Florenche was here, and she speaks about student issues and progressive discipline on students, and 37 each and a quarter, 37 each and a half, 37 each and three quarters, and probably 38 next year. And talked a little bit about students with IEPs and, and then the new Title IX laws, and we'll be, you'll be seeing those sooner than later. Then also, we had Nick Domenello in the after, in the morning, talk about, mostly about personnel, progressive discipline, worked with all, the entire team on what we can, what we can't, and how holding people accountable is the right thing to do, that we need to hold people accountable, including ourselves. And the two days was a good time for us to get together as a team, to collaborate, to communicate, and to work for the same goals, the same vision. Where are we going? How do we get there? What are the supports that are in place? What are the supports that we need to get in place? And instead of restructuring, instead of doing a whole new strategizing, we sort of, we called it, or I called it, and I think we took it together as reculturing, is how we look at the culture that we're in today, and how do we improve upon what we do as leaders of a district, and as teacher leaders in the classroom, as student leaders in our buildings, and as community leaders with our parents. So, those are a lot of things we talked about. We did talk about a creation of a DEI HR, I don't know what to call it, I didn't want to call it a director, I didn't want to call it a coordinator, special assistant to the superintendent, special assistant to the school district. I did, I wrote up some of my own notes of why that we're, we're doing this. It's not to break the bank, it's not to break the community, it's not, and I certainly heard Mr. Selig talk about the, the community, and I certainly understand. We're creating a sustainable culture of inclusivity. We're elevating human resource practices, and hopefully do a better job at what we do in our office. Enhancing educational outcomes for MLL and special education students, multi-language learners as MLL and special education students. Optimizing resource allocation, strengthening stakeholder engagement. The vision of my success for June, that you're going to say that I've been working on this, in our schools, classrooms will be more inclusive, with students actively engaged and supported through tailored instructional strategies. Teachers will feel empowered and equipped to address the diverse needs of their students, leading to higher academic achievements, particularly for MLL and special education students. Dr. Williams talked about this extensively the other day, as we talked about instruction, how we give out instruction, what our leaders have to do inside, in, in the classrooms. We talked about where, where does direct instruction come from, and how do all students receive that? In our staff, the district's HR policies will foster a supportive work environment, contributing to higher staff morale and retention. Our schools will attract and retain talented educators, educators who are aligned with the district's values and committed to its mission. We're asked that question all the time, you know, why, you know, how do we hire? Who do we hire? Why do we hire that person? Why didn't we hire that person? Who are you looking for? Where, where are you advertising? That's some of the reasons for this. And these are just some of the reasons that I brought it up. I, I spoke to Diane Kelly of Revere, I asked her for a sample of her human resource, they call it, she started Human Resource Officer, the person that they hired, as she said, they moved it to, they call him a director. No. I asked Nick Domenello, he deals with many districts, just samples of, of what a human resource director or DEI director does. Many schools after COVID put them together because we don't have the finances to do this. I can't hire this person because I don't have a job specification for it. All I was doing tonight, and all I was talking about, is I thought this would enhance the district, I thought it would do a, be supportive of the district, whether it's OSHA, whether it's FMLA, whether it is attendance, whether it is personnel policy, handbooks, whatever the issue is. And then with diversity and inclusivity, what are we doing in the classrooms? How are we, what are our hiring practices look like? Are we equitable? That's all I was looking for. I wasn't looking for full time. I've said it before to other people, I've talked to Nick Domenello, I've talked to Alicia St. Floren, I've talked to other attorneys, they go out, they find a law student who is taking the bar in, in maybe the spring, and the law student comes in two or three days a week, they work on labor relations with you, they, they learn the, they learn school law, they're in the office with you, and it's sort of like a part-time position, and then they take the bar because they don't want to work full time because they're studying for the, for the bar. That was one option. There was other options that I know that there are consultant companies out there that are doing this, very expensive. You know, I talked to, I can't set the bar for my rules as superintendent, I can't set how much I would pay this person, that's up to you. Whether you give me this job or you don't give the job, whether we take it into consideration or not, into consideration. Revere is up to $90,000, and that's full time. There are other school districts that I did look at that are up to $150,000 in HR. There are another district that I know that does DEI in HR, and they're at $135,000. So, it was just different, I thought it would be something, an added resource and support to the district to have. It's not to break the bank, all I was asking for is to take a look at, what does HR do? Is it an opportunity for the district? Could we look at the job specifications? Could we come up with our own? Is it something that we could put in the budget for this year? Could we find the money this year? If not, can we put it in the budget for next year? That's really what it was all about. It didn't go on to the agenda up to the town hall until Friday morning, because I spoke to you.
Right.
And asked you if I could bring it to the school committee, because I didn't want to scare anybody, nor did I want to say, oh, my God, we're going to put another person in there for $150,000, $160,000. That's not what it was. And I never put it on the agenda, and until I spoke to you, until you and I had a conversation. There are assistant superintendents of districts that have, that are nearby, or directors of education, or business administrators in other districts, or people that are even have in, in HR. There are consulting companies that I have spoken to out there, that are out there that may not want to stay in a district that they have been in, and they have since resigned, started a consulting agency, have gone out, have done different- started a consulting agency, gone out, have done different things. I was just bringing it to the awareness of the school committee that I do believe that with all of the procedures, the policies and the laws that are out there today and the ever-changing, especially in Title IX, especially in special education law and especially in personnel, whether it is in labor relations and, and contractual negotiations or whether it is progressive discipline that are, that are, that we deal with, with adults as well as students. I thought it would be a good idea to bring it to your attention. I'm not, I'm asking for you to look at it. I'm not asking for an answer tonight. I thought, put it on here, bring it to you, show you what Revere did. I, I brought Revere's. I brought, Mr. Dominello sent me a copy today of his thoughts. I put some thoughts together. This is actually going on my, probably in my eval, but why we're doing it and a supportive system. And that's really what it is.
Can I say something?
Would you say that not having an HR person in your office, in this central office is
detrimental to the everyday running of the office?
I wouldn't say it's detrimental. I think it's an added support and an opportunity to be able to have another set of eyes in areas that we do not, that I am not a lawyer. John's not a lawyer. Gina's not a lawyer. The closest we have is Mrs. Joanne Connors, who was a paralegal at Murphy Hesse Tumi and Lehane and works a lot on our contracts with Mr. Dominello and Ms. St. Floren. We use our attorneys a lot because we don't want to make a mistake. We haven't made major mistakes, huge mistakes that have cost our district a lot of money. But we also have used our attorneys. I'll use an example. Jay Fallon had a student last year that he brought in Alicia St. Floren to talk to the parents and we negotiated a better, it was a deal, but negotiated a deal that was successful for both of us, successful for the student, but successful for the district. And not going for, you know, a $750,000 ticket item to, we can help this and we can, we think we can do better here and this is a better placement and these types of things. So we do use our attorneys in that way. We also use our attorneys to make sure that when we're in contractual negotiations, the wording. We just did, we are putting out to print our four units that we did our negotiations with in the spring. Our attorney called us back. Many of our, many of our things say he, she. That's gone now. It's they, them. So, I mean, it's the little things that we don't, that sometimes we, you know, not we, I, that I move and I move fast because I go to the buildings and I'm working with parents and I'm working with educators and I'm trying to get things done. And I don't want to overlook something. We talk about FMLA. It's, it's not as easy as everybody thinks. Insurance is not as easy as everybody thinks to keep up with, as, as Mr. Seelig just said, you know, we talked to the treasurer clerks that Ozempic is more expensive and people are going on it for different reasons. You know, we have, I think the count today was up, I have seven maternity leaves. And I'm using I because I don't want anybody to think I'm pointing at you or pointing at anybody, we. The district has seven maternity leaves coming. That paperwork has to be filed. That paperwork has to be filed properly. We have to make sure that we, so, and I, I use that as the, the greatest.
Okay, ask a question. So if somebody submits for a maternity leave now and they're going to do FMLA, who does, who, who manages that process?
They'll send it to John Shea and then it starts because it's in the payroll.
Okay.
And then it's in ASOP and then it goes to Michael and then we have to put it in the ASOP and then Erica looks at it. So, and then I see it and then the principal has to know about it because then we have to go out and get a, then we go back to the, we don't really have an extensive sub-list. So we have to start looking for a teacher. So it, it probably hits four or five hands before it, it settles. But it comes up to John's office because it's business and finance and it goes to, and then it's, then we're talking about, I hear about it. How long, when, when is, we, we had a, we, one of our teachers came up today, due in October, came up with the paperwork. We already know it's 12, we already know it's 12 weeks. We already know where they, what they're, what the doctors know says, where they're going to go, what's going, where they're, what the certificate needs to be. And so we started at that point. So.
But that's a good example of something that would be filtered through this type of person instead of John Shea would make more sense.
Right. I mean, everybody has their job.
Yeah.
And there's just a lot to.
Plus more.
Yeah, plus more. And everybody's doing double. And I just, I'm bringing it to attention because it, there is a lot going on in any district.
Well, if I, excuse me, interrupt there. I just wanted to add another dimension to this. And some of the origins, the HR, there's two components, HR, DEI. HR has been talked about for well over a year or so. Correct me if I'm wrong, Superintendent, but it, it comes up time and time again, how important that department is to the operation, not only of a school, of any organization of this scope and dimension. So HR is important, but along the way, we also put on the goals for Superintendent Legault, a DEI audit. And we've been through this, Superintendent, the administration has done a lot of work under the DEI umbrella, but the specifics of the goal is, hey, we want an audit done. Well, Superintendent has talked to a number of other entities and there's pluses and minuses to the audit. And in our last subcommittee meeting, Becky and myself met with Superintendent Legault, we talked about DEI and hey, wouldn't it be great? It's so, it's so closely related to HR that maybe there's a way we can think about this that we could maybe bring somebody else, bring somebody in-house on a, on some sort of part-time or however kind of basis that makes sense and can sort of live in the community and help us get HR squared away and get the policies, procedures lined up so it's, everything's operating properly and can also lend a set of eyes and education to the whole DEI process. So both are incredibly important and unless we change Superintendent's goals, she's got to do something on the DEI front and perhaps not going all the way to an audit, something like this might be a way of, of working through it.
And, and when we talk about DEI, we, we do have at each school, we do have police warrenham coming in. We are, we do have DEI committees at each school. We do meet regularly with committees. It was, it came, I mean, this is, this has been going on for, it's got to be at least four or five years now about having an audit. You know, do you bring in a smaller company, a bigger company? We had one company start at 26,000. We had somebody else at 150,000. It's just, it was an opportunity to give it out for you to think about it, talk about it, and then we can bring it back. And if you say, geez, Liz, it's just, we're not ready for it, then fine. Or maybe I thought, I figured I would put it out there and then if you had questions, you could either call me or send questions back and then discuss them at the next meeting. I didn't want, I know tonight's meeting was very, very long. This came up and I said, there's some opportunities out there. And then we had the meeting with the subcommittee and I said, let me get it out there now. So that's really why I brought it to the attention.
So I guess there's a lot outside, you know, superintendent goals, what we're charged with, what Mr. Seelig touched upon earlier on, which are budgetary restraints and so forth. So I take a look at it in this way and I, Charlie, I don't know if you're available to, to talk, but I'm, I'm sure that there are other HR needs, not just at the school and other departments. So I wonder, and I'm sure there are additional attorney costs at other departments, just like there are here. So I wonder if we need to take a look at an overarching thing that maybe it's not just all on the school, that it could be some type of shared service within the, within the entire town.
So I, I would like to answer. I would like to bring that up. I did ask about that. I have said it to several business ministers, several of the town administrators and said, you want to split an HR director? No one has ever taken me up on that. No one has ever said no or yes. I'm not saying that it was Charlie. I'm just saying I have spoken to other. And I, but I agree with you.
No, maybe, maybe there's an opportunity for cost savings.
Sure.
Like Lakeville has a director of HR for the town.
Yes.
So I don't know if that's something that saves, it could be a potential savings there as opposed to an, you know.
Boston, and Boston is extremely large. They have their own HR team and they have their own legal team. They're much larger. They're like their own little small city within a city.
And Revere is much more diverse than we are, so.
Right. But I, I, I looked at all those models. I just thought I would bring it out here, at least I, we're, at least as the school district, to bring it out and to say, let's put it on the table and let's start talking about it and let's start needing it and, and opening it up. Because the people in the town is the school community as well. And the students that we have is increasing in MLL learners. We're having a more diverse student population and I want to make sure that they are represented and, and, and they feel that we are an inclusive school district. And if my hiring policies, again, I say I, because I don't want anybody to feel like I'm pointing fingers, if it is I, then how do I change them and how do I work with them? And we, and we've worked with people in other school districts who have the diverse policy. I use Taunton as one. I use Brockton as one. Even Foxborough is, is more diverse and, and so.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent. Thanks for your, two incredibly important areas, HR, DEI, as we have identified it. And thank you, Superintendent, for putting it on the table, giving us some information to digest. It's worthy of our thought. It's worthy of our effort. We might come up with some imaginative ways of achieving what we're looking to do. Perfect. Good for everybody. But I do think it's something we need to address as a committee. Send any questions you have to Superintendent. Want more background, whatever, whatever it might be, let's, let's see what we come up with because I think, I think the district will benefit tremendously.
It sounds like it also needs budget attention. So I don't know if this is one of those examples, if we're shifting a format, is this an appropriate use of the budget subcommittee to come together and talk about that number, right? Like bringing that smaller group together, having that discussion to then bring it to the larger group because we know we can't all, for legal reasons, we cannot all have this conversation out loud all the time. And we'd sit here for hours and hours to have it in one of our regularly scheduled meetings. So it seems like with shifting this format and the use of the subcommittees, this is a great subcommittee conversation, sorry, budget subcommittee. But it seems like that's a great place to tease those details out because we clearly need to think about the expense and what that looks like in order to make this decision with thinking about all of that combined. Which just my one question would be for that or the committee and I can email later. Is looking at the costs that we have now for paying for legal for a lot of these HR reasons or a lot of the reasons where we're teasing out something about just someone's needs? If we're looking at what that cost is, if we had someone in-house, are we, are we potentially offsetting? You know, we are paying for the resource to some degree anyway. There is a cost already happening.
Sure.
For these services. So it seems like it would make sense for people who have a numbered brain, not me, to be able to look at, well, what is that? Is there an offset there?
I think.
Or not.
I think my job is to put it on the table to you and to say, if you want to take it to whatever subcommittee you want to take it to, now you can take it and you say, okay, we're going to come up with some job specifications and we're going to give you 30,000 to 50,000 to fill this position. That's, that's your job. My job is to bring it to you and say, we needed the supports. And that's really what I asked Gordon, Mr. McKinnon, if I could do. But you're right. It goes to the subcommittee and the subcommittee brings it back and says yes or no.
Right, to talk about. What is the, what is VDH, sorry?
Valario, Dominello and Hillman. That's.
Okay. So they drafted this?
That's where I got it today.
Yeah, okay.
Yes. I have.
Yeah.
I know that you want to keep going because you wanted to, to keep the meeting going. I want to thank John. I know that the Massachusetts Association of School Business Officials, they received some information on some air exchange units, these carrier opti-cleanes. I had the custodians bring them down today. We received 20 for the district. John, do you want to speak about that or do you want me to just?
So there was an opportunity from a company that was donating these air, air scrubber machines. So we, we reached out to them. They said they, we could obtain 20 of them. They were delivered yesterday. These machines provide, they clean, clean the air. So there's two filters in, in the machine. There's a herb filter, there's a HEPA filter and we are currently taking a look at areas that could benefit from these machines, like nursing offices. I can think of a couple places at Central that may benefit from this, that don't have So it was, it was a good opportunity. They gave us 20 of them, which is worth about $47,000, I think, from donation. These were left over from COVID when the company probably sold hundreds and thousands of these and they were looking to clean out their warehouse. So we were able to score 20 of them.
So I did have a conversation, as John did, with the custodians. They had them bring that down. So you're more than welcome to, we can plug it in, you can listen to it to hear how loud it is. It is loud on level three. It's not so loud on level one. We talked about open areas, maybe in, when we have something in the auditoriums that you would put a couple in there to keep the, the air flowing. But we, we are cleaning the buildings extensively right now. And as you know, we do not have HVAC in the central school or the middle school. So that, those buildings particularly need exchange air. They also need air conditioning. They also need a lot of movement of air during the day. We, right now, I just walked each building. They're, they're looking better every day. The floors are waxed. The classrooms are coming better. I walked with Kate at the Central this, this afternoon and Matt got to why I did walk the high school today. It's looking really, we're really coming together. But those are an opportunity for us to have in the, to have an exchange air system. And so thank you to the Business Association for, for grabbing them and getting them out. I also got a question about the free and reduced lunches. Everybody in Massachusetts gets a free lunch. We're still on the free lunch. However, the information on students is in a portal from the state and they send that out and they tell us who gets free and reduced lunch. There's no more filling out a form. With that being said, prior to that, when students filled out a form for free and reduced lunch, we were able to see and able to give them a waiver to a reduced cost for athletics or, or for students who did not receive free or reduced lunch, we could offer waivers for athletics, drama, band, that's them. Now we cannot use food service money for that. So I did ask Deb Vaughn to get the rules and regs for us right now. Districts must still run DC and notify households of the results, attach to sharing information. They still have the forms of how much it is to, how much is up to, to get free and reduced lunch. We're not, we cannot offer waivers anymore from the state level. If you offer a waiver, the school committee will have to come up with its own policy and to figure out how to give out waivers. And how you would have to do that would figure out what is your threshold of cost and who you're going to give a waiver to and who you're not going to give a waiver to.
Are you talking about a waiver as far as like busing?
But transportation, transportation and sports, the activities that we offer waivers for. I'm so sorry. waivers for. I'm so sorry, I forgot about transportation. So I got that information today and, uh, or I had Deb get the information, uh, to send out to all of you.
So every student does get or does not get a free?
They still get a free lunch, but if you, if they, if, every student gets a free lunch.
Okay.
But in a la carte, you're still going to pay for the a la carte, like those, uh, if you want to, uh, what do they have down there? Pretzels? You've got ice cream, they've got popcorn. What else do they get?
Snacks.
Yeah, snacks. Like that is not on the free and reduced.
An extra lunch.
Lunch.
Breakfast is free too.
Yeah, and breakfast is free.
And the, the school, so we can't look at any state list or, well, I mean, not us, but the district is not allowed to look at any list for students to see who should get a waiver or not.
Well.
Go ahead, John.
So we submit the data on all our students. It's, that is done through the food service department. The, the state, uh, looks at that data and tells us which, which students are on Medicaid, participate in SNAP, um, or, or other programs like that. Those students are considered direct certified. Those are the students that have always in the past been afforded, uh, free, uh, transportation, uh, free sports and things like that. Now, we or I cannot get that information from our food service department directly unless the parent, uh, signs, uh, a form saying that they, they allow the food service department to share that information with us. So recently there, there's been, I think we had about five hundred and fifty kids that were direct certified. So what our food service department does is notifies them that they are, were direct certified and also sends them a sharing form that allows the food service department to share those names with us because the parent gives permission to allow them to ride the bus for free, uh, play sports for free.
So that's about a quarter of our student population?
Uh, yeah, it was about five hundred and fifty students, I, I believe. I, I.
Thirty-four percent maybe?
Thirty-four.
So do, does, yeah, I can talk today. Does the school committee have to write a policy? No. Okay.
So.
You're gonna have to.
Obviously, that process follows itself through.
That's what I'm saying. We have to.
If they don't share that information, then those students are not eligible for free busing, free sports.
Right. What usually happens is, uh, we'll reach out to the parent or the athletic director will reach out to the parent saying.
The athletic director can't unless they.
No. If, if, if someone doesn't pay for sports, the athletic director will reach out to the parent and say, uh, listen, you didn't pay for sports. And the parent may say, well, I, I get free sports. Well, the athletic director will say, well, I don't have that information because you didn't fill out a sharing form. So we would then provide the sharing form. It, it's a process that takes months to get all the, all the families to provide us that information.
It comes off our portals. It comes off our information.
So there's still a mechanism to give waivers?
The, the wa- the waiver comes from the state. If the, if the state lets us know who is directly certified because they, because the family participates.
It's up to the parents now to make sure that if they want to fill that information. Do we have an idea as to the costs of those that are certified that are receiving benefits? Which in my mind is a fairly inclusive kind of mindset. So we're not excluding anybody from playing sports or riding the bus. So that's an, it's an inclusive type of mindset.
Yes.
Correct? So I guess what I'm trying to get at is, is we're spending some money on some inclusive things.
Yes.
It'd be good for us to have an understanding as to how much money we are sharing or providing. Is that fair to say, John? Yes, I think so. Thank you.
But I, I do know that at some point, we as a, as a school committee is going to have to decide what the cutoff is.
That's my.
And I think what I, I think that's what I'm hearing, Mr. Fury. And that's why I, maybe I talked a little too fast and was just trying to pass this out tonight because I know that Gordon's out and trying to make this move. But you're going to have to say yes or no. And I've said for, since I've been here, I don't believe in paying for sports. I think sports are good for kids. I think they should be able to go. I think drama is great for kids. Anybody should be able to join drama. I think the band. I think anything that a student wants to do should be free. I get it. It started a long time, a long time ago now, pay for pla- uh, pay to play. Um, but the school committee would have to come up with their own type of rules, policy, procedure, protocol, whatever you want to call it. So. But I wanted to send that out because, um, I did speak to Deb Vaughn today, our food director. Um, the letter has gone out and they are still receiving calls on, why am I not getting that? Why am I not seeing that? Why? So she just wanted to make sure I bring it up to you tonight so that you have this information and that you could go through it.
So before we would move on, I think I don't understand the now what. I hear you. The school committee needs to come up with something. It sounds like for.
No, I, I don't think we have to yet.
Not yet.
When?
Well, we'll find out. We'll see what happens this fall and we will see.
So there's people that play fall sports that are not affected by this currently?
I don't know yet. There may be kids that aren't affected and there may be kids that are affected. We'll know with the new list that comes out. We'll, we'll see a whole new, see a whole new seventh grade come up.
It's up to the individual.
It's up to the parents or the guardians.
What my brain is doing is how fast are we getting together to turn around that information that they are going to need in order to move forward for students to participate?
That was a communication that was sent out by, uh, Parents Square last week, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
Right, I get all that. I think it's more about like us.
And I think, I think though, um, in our, I think in the way that we look at it, and I think John just said it about, uh, Mr. Leonard and about the athletic department, nobody, we don't say no. Child gets on the team, they're practicing. All of a sudden the list comes out, whole person didn't pay. Their name wasn't on this other list. Patrick, uh, the athletic director says, hey, you know, I didn't get your payment. Then that's where the, that's when the parent gets involved and we figure out. There are some parents that may call and say, I can't do this. I don't have the money. I've got four kids. I just can't do it. That's when we decide.
Isn't that something that's, um, people in the past have gone to you as a superintendent to ask and then you just say yes or no or whatever?
Well, we can say that, but again, the financial and what, what Mr. Sealy just said it and, and we're hearing it tonight and we've been hearing it for the last two years, is that if we keep doing this, we don't have any money. But that's what, that's we're a public school and that's, it's just like transportation. Um, I think, what is it, John? Forty-seven cents a day to ride our buses?
I think it's up to seventy-five cents a day.
It's seventy-five cents to ride our buses and if, you know, almost five hundred, ride them free. Our buses are packed. And, and I don't want anybody to pay for those and I don't want anybody to pay for their lunch. I don't want anybody to pay for, you know, to play sports or to do an act of school activity.
But it's not the reality.
It's not the reality. Right. And so now, now we're here, so we just have to figure it out. We've reduced the cost of, to play, um, over the last couple of years. We've reduced some costs of, of to join some of our programming. Um, we, last year we increased the bus costs. We increased preschool, um, tuition. So, I mean, it's, it's a give or take. But do we have to do something right this second? No. Um, we don't have all the information in and, uh, that dates in October when we do the, the enrollment. So usually by then we know where we're at.
I just ask a question about process. So this year, district must still run DC and notify households of results. That's something we do. And when we do that, we attach a sharing of information form. You get information. And then what would need to happen is then we would need to come up with a policy and a request form for additional. Is that what you're saying? I, I think I'm missing something. Sorry. I know you're trying to be clear and I'm just not getting it.
Well, because it's, it's.
It's a little convoluted?
It's convoluted and it's complicated because the students, it's private. It's private information.
Right.
So the students come back, they get free, they get free lunch. So that means they get free transportation and they can play the sport. Somebody comes back, they get a reduced lunch and a reduced fare for transportation. And a parent fills out a form and says, I can't even afford the thirty cents. It can't, we've got to find where, where are we going to get that money from? How many, how many students is that going to affect going forward? I think, I mean, I said to Mr. Deb today, I said, you know, is it because they're giving out free lunch to everybody now, you know, across the country? And that just, the federal government said everybody's going to get a free lunch? And now that they've seen that the cost of it and what, what, what the cost of lunch is and it's, it's, it's becoming a, it's not cost effective, I guess. Um, is that what it is? Is it, is it because athletics are so exp- I don't know. But.
Well, it sounds like.
It becomes the individual district of what we, we're going to do.
So, but it sounds like no action we're going to take until we look at it in October.
No.
Well, I'd suggest we put that on the.
The tickler?
Agenda. The tickler, yeah, very good. Amy's been looking for work.
We won't even have any, any figures or data or anything, not even in September. We'll have information maybe in October.
You know, Deb Vaughn has information all the ti- I mean, well, well, she stays active. It's live. She'll know and she will continue to, to look at it, but.
Oh, no, I mean, um, I mean, as far as like students, you know, we have like five hundred and fifty or five hundred and some odd students that get free or reduced. Then what percentage of those kids play a sport or take the bus or do whatever? And, and then what that cost is.
I think that's what Mr. Fury is. To Mr. Fury's point, that's what he's asking is what is.
That's going to be ahead of us. So I, I just want us to move on.
Yeah, okay.
It's definitely on the agenda.
I was just passing it out.
The system.
Thank you.
Trying to, it's, it's a very convoluted system. I said to Deb Vaughn, I said, if I knew that, uh, you were going to hand me all this, I would have said, you, you got to come.
Yeah, and I don't want you to think that sharing form is new. That's, that's been.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
That's always been.
Right, because that was like a release of information. Right, yeah.
All I knew is I saw the original message and I said, I have to start paying for lunch? What's going on? Because Garrett eats so much. He can't afford it.
So we're going to move on and we're going to let Dr. Williams talk about the central school building, which is, is that project done yet?
Yes, yes.
It's.
Have you not looked out the window? Yeah, thank you. Uh, welcome back everyone. So just a quick update on what's.
Seven oh two P M.
It's seven oh two. Uh, what has transpired since we last met in the spring? Um, as you know, the school building committee hired an operations project manager. We hired Leftfield. Um, Alyssa Shetani is our project manager. Kevin Sullivan is our senior project manager. For those of us on the committee, I'm sure everyone can attest to the fact that it's been great having them, um, working with the committee now and, and getting us all in order. At this point, we are moving towards securing a designer architect. So we go through another process for that. Um, back in late June, we put our request for services out. Um, July tenth, I think, is when we had visitation at Central School where, uh, potential firms could come and take a look at Central School to see if they'd want to put, put a proposal in. We had a great showing, about twenty people there. I think they said they represented about twelve to fifteen different firms. Uh, the deadline was, uh, the end of July, I think the thirty-first, where we had six proposals that came in. In talking to our O P Ms, um, they were very happy with the proposals that came in, lots of strong firms. Um, so as a school building committee, we can have three representatives from our committee who will join with nine representatives, uh, from the MSBA and will serve as the panel, uh, who will then interview and vote on the design architect. Um, so our local committee can have a superintendent or designee. Uh, so superintendent Lego designated myself. Uh, we need to have a, a chief operating, uh, financial officer of the town. So that's Charlie Sealy. And then the school committee, you may remember, Gordon, bringing it up to you, the school committee also has a member. Um, and you all voted to allow the building committee to choose that representative and it's Brian Kylie, who is our facilities, uh, director for the town. So the three of us have met with the MSBA already to go over procedures and protocols. Uh, we'll meet, uh, virtually next Tuesday, um, to go through the six applicants and then make a determination for the top two or three that we actually want to interview. We'll interview them on September tenth. A determination will be made. Um, clearly there's three of us. There's nine MSBA members. Um, so we're going to try to sway them as much as possible with our top choice, uh, at that point. And then we have our next building committee meeting, uh, September twenty-fourth, where we'll be coming back to the, uh, central school building committee, uh, and voting on who that design architect firm will be. Uh, and then we'll be ready to, once we have a contract, move forward with the feasibility study. Uh, we have a website that's in process right now. Leftfield also assists with that. So it'll be linked to the town website as well as our school website. Um, and with the departure of Mrs. Fiddler, um, who we sorely missed, uh, we shift Dan over to our school committee representative, uh, which opened up a community representative. Uh, and we have a community member who's also a parent of a central school, uh, student, and he's a structural engineer, Sean Bush. So he has been added to our committee. Uh, we elected him at our last meeting. So now we have a full complement of committee members again. Um, and we're ready to move forward. Any questions? To the committee, so you're welcome.
But just to summarize, it's not built yet.
Not yet. Not yet.
Take your time. Okay. Thank you, Gina.
You're welcome.
Um, one of the next bullet points is superintendent's evaluation process and goals. We've already started to touch on that. In the packet, you have a summation of the goals that we identified. And I just wanted to bring it to your attention that, like I said before, we'll set up a Zoom workshop so you can see how the software works and you can track the information that Superintendent Lego is uploading to that system. And April is when her summative evaluation is due. So that's at the end of a two-year cycle. I'm really excited about this software. It makes so much sense compared to the way we did it before. So I just, any, anyone have any follow-up questions on that? Or there'll be more once I know when that, we'll, we'll get some ideas when we can do the Zoom meeting with this lady. And she's probably pretty good. She'll probably set up a couple if, if everyone can't make one. So, okay. Uh, school committee, uh, members to meet with Superintendent Lego individually two times a year. The idea for this, it occurred to me last year, whatever, that, uh, these meetings are fine, a lot of information, but to have the opportunity and Superintendent Lego welcomed the idea to say, as individuals on the committee, welcome to sit, have coffee with Superintendent, you know, have a discussion, whatever it is. It's just your time with her to understand more, to ask some questions, just to kind of get to know her since we, we work so closely with her. So we will leave that, correct me if I'm wrong, we'll, we'll leave it up to us as individuals to reach out, you know, reach out to Michael.
Mm-hmm.
When you have the time, okay, hey, I, I can meet with Liz the afternoon of the seventeenth or, uh, breakfast on the twelfth, whatever it may be. And we'll leave it up to, assuming that there's, since it's only six of us, it should be fairly manageable there. But if there's a problem, Michael will let us know and say, hey, wait a minute. Everybody wants the same date at the same time. Uh, so the idea is just that. If there's no agenda, it's whatever you have in your mind or on your notes to say, gee, I'm glad I got to spend this time with you, Superintendent. Can you explain to me why this or why this is a problem or where do you think this is going to go? Whatever it may be. And so I just, it's an opportunity. Yeah. Okay? Are we okay with that? All right. Uh, the meeting agenda format, I went through at the beginning.
Ask you a quick question.
Sure.
This was the supervow stuff. Uh, when, how quickly do you think you're looking to schedule? Just curious.
I'll, I'll, I'll call her tomorrow because I don't have, I, I want to see when she's available. My experience with her is that, hey, she'll tell us, hey, we can do anything. I can do anything. Uh, so I'll, I'll find out. I'll let you know. Okay?
Yes.
The meeting, uh, agenda format I talked about, um, I just wanted to go back and emphasize that as, whatever subcommittee you're on, if you can reach out to the other members to say, hey, by the way, it looks like we're probably going to start meeting in January, whether it's too soon to start targeting some dates or, or weeks or whatever. whether it's too soon to start targeting some dates or, or weeks or whatever. It's, I just know from my own experience, it's much easier to perhaps change a date than it is to create one at the last minute, kind of thing. So any meaningful conversation you can have with the other members. And one of the other suggestions, which I think is an excellent one, is that amongst yourselves, let's say the street people on the subcommittee, if somebody can either volunteer or get voted to be sort of the spokesperson, sort of the liaison, and when it comes time to report back to the main committee, you know, that's, they can do that. I mean, not that anyone else can't speak as well on the committee, but one person can, it's going to make things a lot more manageable. So if, if whatever subcommittee you're on, if you could say, hey, you know, Amy's going to be, you know, our lead person, Ellen's going to be for this committee, whatever it is, and just so we kind of know, you know, who to turn to if we had a question.
Can I make a comment about this?
Sure.
Just the subcommittees. So one thing also to remember, while some people might not realize or know, is that, um, when you meet as a subcommittee, you're supposed to take minutes and then the minutes have to be voted on and approved and then, um, they go, they go to Mike to hold forever and ever.
Great, thank you very much, that's a good point. And that, when you say voted on, it's voted on, if the subcommittee is three people, then the three people vote on it. Doesn't, we don't, as a main commu-, uh, committee, don't vote for it. Uh, but thanks for bringing that up, Ellen, thanks.
Did you also comment it has to be posted? Did you say that, that they have to be posted?
Oh, um, well, for subcommittee meetings, yes, they have to be posted.
I just didn't know if you said it, sorry.
No, I didn't, but following open meeting law.
Yep.
Right.
Roles, I mean.
The yearly agenda, I'll work with Michael, he attached a copy based on the two meetings a month. We do, you know, budget, finance, one meeting, we do, um, help me, strategic plan, the next, whatever. So now that we're combined into one, we just have to kind of combine that annual agenda so that it, it follows our meeting schedule. I will work with him on that. The operating, part of your package should have the operating protocols and.
We got, when we, so you know how you're going through the agenda and talking about all this? When you get to the, when you get to the, um, action items, are there going to be discussion? You know, like when we vote on all this stuff?
Yeah, so if they make a motion and somebody seconds it, say, okay, discussion, or make a motion, discussion, and finalize it, sure. The, uh, Mike, do you have, um, like, operating protocols and goals, uh, blank copy so we can sign it? If we agree with it, or? I know I have copies here that they were signed from last year's committee. Okay, because we'll need to sign off on it. I, I.
We can sign it at the next meeting.
Yeah, I didn't, it was, did anyone have, so for instance, on the operating protocols, it's pretty straightforward, but did anyone have any questions about that or objections or?
No, well, just for the new people, this is something, it was created a few, like, I don't know how many years ago when we had Dorothy Presser come and, um, that's how they even came to be. We had someone from, a field rep from MASC come to, we had like a workshop or whatever and we ended up creating these operating protocols and they've been tweaked over the last couple of years, but.
Right.
Well, the meeting and agendas obviously should be updated to follow your new formatting for 10 days prior.
Yep.
And.
But you can send those. You can look those over too and send that information up.
Well, that, we probably couldn't have changed it, the operating protocols couldn't have been changed before today because we have to vote on everything.
Yeah, I noted that, I've changed those. Any, any other questions on the operating protocol? It just kind of gives us a, you know, a generic basis, like, oh, hey, here's how we all agree, um, to operate with each other. My favorite is, we don't debate the other person, we debate, debate the subject. I have to remind people of that, you know? And there's that, and then the next would be the, uh, uh, school committee goals, which again, part of your package as well too. And one of the things, I, I, once we agree upon them, these were set up to last for three years, I think. And, uh, if we choose to change them, we can change them, but I think one of the things that will help us is, is if that periodically we check in on them to say, hey, by the way, how are we doing on goal X? So that'll, that'll be on my agenda to make sure we follow up on that. Any, any thoughts or questions on the goals?
One other thing too, just, um, so this is something we had also worked with someone from the MASC, a field rep. And, um, that's how the school, well, you probably already know that, school committee goals, that's how they became, they came to be. And then they got tweaked in the last couple of years, but not by much.
Mm-hmm, yep. Well, well, the other reason I bring it up too is that these ones are, um, they expire, sort of to the end in 2025. So, uh, the committee, before the end of the year, will probably have to have a discussion about, hey, do we want to, how do we want to revise these on a go-forward basis?
And that would go on the annual calendar?
Yes.
That and the goals also follow our responsibility, like the fiscal policy, that type of thing.
Yes, okay. The other, uh, point here is, uh, next bullet point is consider publishing roles and responsibilities of the school committee superintendent and principals. And that's something that I can, I can work with Superintendent Lego about. The roles and responsibilities of the school committee, I think, are in the, the new member packet, uh, kind of spells it out. And just so, I, I think the point came up that does the public really understand where these, uh, silos isn't a good, um, a, a good way of referencing it, but for lack of a better way, you know? Oh, by the way, this, this would be a principal's question, this would be a superintendent question, this would be a, a school committee question. For the sake that, and maybe we put that on our, on our website so that people can reference it. I don't expect them to memorize it, but there should be a point of reference. Does that sound reasonable, Liz, to add it to our website?
Mm-hmm.
Good. All right, anything on that?
Well, so, so roles and responsibility of the school committee, that would be this.
Right.
And then superintendent and principals. And so are those documented somewhere that somebody would review before they got published to the website, or?
Yeah, I suppose, yep. Michael's. The, the, the school handbooks, I'm sorry, are we done with that?
No, no, no. What, what paper, what, what paper did you just hold up? The goals?
She got it from the package.
I mean, this is roles and responsibilities, right? So which, that's different than goals, right?
New member packet.
Oh, 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 okay.
All right.
Can I say something about this? Did you already talk about this?
I haven't yet, but go ahead.
Okay. Oh, I just wanted to say, when I was looking through it, I just had one little tweak to it.
Okay.
It might be, um, it's just on the third page, where it says, um, this committee, uh, it's under subcommittee for superintendent's evaluation process. It says this committee may meet twice per year and I just wanted to add or more as needed.
Oh, okay.
Because in the past, we met a lot. But maybe we might not, maybe we might not need to, need to it.
Okay. Page two.
Oh.
I'll see if that.
No. Oh, it's page two. Peter corrected me. Thank you, Peter.
Okay, thank you, Ellen. All right, the.
When we get to, sorry, one more thing, when we get to a point that people have decided who's going to be the lead for each subcommittee, can we note that on this?
Oh, great, yeah, that would be terrific, sure.
Is this that Google sheet that I sent you when you said, I pasted the things in it?
Yeah. Okay, now, student handbooks and superintendent, correct me if I'm wrong. The, my understanding is the handbooks, because they have to be approved by us, are an extension of our policies, correct?
Yeah.
And one of us, who had a lot of time reading through these things, picked up some issues. Now, I know we have to have them approved to start the new, the new year, which is next week, right? Have them available. But as, as a couple of examples, Amy, would you share a couple of things that?
Can I, can I just ask though, before you start? Can I have the principals, all three? If you could, just bring your, uh, your chairs up to the table. Um, so you have a mic, because they've worked on the handbooks. So I, I think if you're going to ask the questions, it's. And usually they only send up changes.
Yeah.
Just so you know.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, thank you, great. I think it's awesome to look at them year to year. I, again, Liz and I had this conversation about when people are, um, looking at things, sometimes they just look at things that are close to them. So what I had only previously looked at the junior senior handbook, because that really was all that was applicable to my world. So this was sort of my first chance of looking at the Mitchell School. And these are more just questions, maybe comments for like future, like however, however the process works. But I had noticed there was some links to other documents, right? So, um, there was like a link to a harassment policy, but it looked like it was dated from 2017, so I didn't know if that was like the most recent form they should be linking to. And there was a link to a hazing policy, which also was from 2017. And I didn't note that it was, um, in the high school handbook. So I was wondering, part of that, you know, how you said comprehensive, like, we're all one district, if we should be making sure that any of these sub-policies that are part of the Mitchell School and Central School handbooks align with the junior senior high school handbook too. So I think maybe it would be good to take like a comprehensive look at how all three of them line up.
And not just that, they, the, the policies like hazing, bullying, that type of thing, um, they're supposed to align with our school committee policies.
I saw that, and the junior senior handbook, there's a school committee policy, yeah.
So on the Mitchell School one, I started to look at it and then I realized I need to look at this with a fine tooth comb because, um, with the links, like the links that you were just referencing, um, it looks like they're not linked to the actual policy manual online. They're linked somewhere else, like a Google Doc or something.
Yeah.
It probably should go to, it probably should be linked to the policy manual online. So I need to, I like, I, I don't feel prepared to vote on them right now. I need to look through it more in-depth.
I think that they, they, what you, what, what's there now can stand as is, right? And if there needs, right? So I, I mean, if people have feedback, maybe we can, I don't, we don't want to rip it apart, you know?
I think my, my suggestion would be, if you saw something in the handbook that you questioned or you would like to know an answer to, or you would like us to look at the link, would be to send it to me and the principal, so the principal can look at it. We've had our, we've had our attorneys extensively look at the junior senior high school. We've had them look at Mitchell School and the elementary school central, not as much as we have had the junior senior high school over the last few years. But that's probably, probably two years out now and we've had more laws that change. Is there anything that sticks out to any, the three of you that you would like to bring up now? And then I can have the school committee write to us and, I mean, if there's something that really sticks out that you would like to hear from them, I'm sure that they would.
No, nothing that stuck out, I just, there was, and again, because I was looking at, looking at it as a, a new reader, because I hadn't read the Central School, there was just those questions of if the links were correct and if they aligned with all the other handbooks. And I think, again, appreciate the work, I don't want to rip apart, you know? Like, let's look at a, maybe a bullet point of feedback and then figure out what's the right thing to do.
Perfect.
Can I ask, uh, so Amy, are you saying that the school committee has a more updated policy on the website than what you saw on the link?
So in the junior senior handbook, there's reference to a bullying prevention policy. Do I think that was established in 2023?
We have, the actual school committee policy is listed right in this ju- junior senior high school handbook. It's like in there and it has the actual filed policy number. Is that what you mean?
Yeah, it's, it looks like it was added in as like a, instead of an addendum, it was like put in. And it, I don't think it was the same as what the link to the Central, or the Mitchell Schools bullying or harassment policy was.
Okay, because there are two things. There's the, there's a bullying policy.
Yeah.
And then there's a bullying prevention intervention plan.
Okay.
Which.
Yeah, that's different, that's a different book.
But the policies, as you know, continue to get updated.
Right, right.
I think the easiest thing for the principals would be, if you have the most updated on the website, then they can just link to the page on the website.
Matt?
Well, the latest and greatest is on the website, right? Although they might be being updated, but that will always be thus, right?
Right, and well, and even if it's, like, this is hypothetical. Even if there's a policy that's not updated, the most updated version, like the bullying policy is on the actual website. Like if you go to the school committee policy section on the website, on the EPPS website, that bullying policy is the most updated one. So it's whatever, I don't know, I think it was a Google Doc.
The school committee, the school committee's policy overrules anything in that, in, in the handbooks. So if the, if the handbook was old, linked to, like you said, linked to 2017, the newest policy, if it was up or not, or you hadn't voted on it yet, or say you voted on it tonight.
Would supersede it.
That would supersede it. So the most updated school committee policy rules the district. The handbooks, we try to keep up with so that students have them and now they're going online. But Matt, I, I can see trying to.
Oh, yeah, we're, we're pretty careful about making sure that the, they're the most updated documents in those, in that appendix with the links. We love the idea of having the appendix, first of all, because sometimes school handbooks or student handbooks can be overly lengthy and it kind of turns people away from reading them. But if you can click on the link and go to it from there, fantastic. The document that I knew that was the most updated was a staff handbook that was created for staff accessibility to some of these documents. Are you saying them loud? So it's in that staff handbook, um, again, they, when they were creating that, they made sure that those documents were the most updated regardless of what the date is. However, the great point that you bring up, that staff handbook, the audience is different from the school handbook. So the link there goes to a Google document, whereas I think your suggestion is excellent. It should go to the website because our audience is the families and the public. So adjusting where the links go is a, is an excellent recommendation, I appreciate that. But, um, we, we definitely wanted to make sure that the documents that are there were accurate. And our question, you know, going back through the course of this year, is do we need all those links? Which ones can we leave off? Which ones are absolutely necessary, just to kind of condense it even further? We wanted to make it as economical and readable and as approachable and accessible as possible. But I really appreciate that, that knowing now, kind of looking back, the audience is the families, the community.
I personally love the link idea and I think if you're going, we're going to do that. I mean, I think using, since we do use Google, using some kind of Google file folder structure that it's like locked or secured in some way by your staff, that's, this is handbook, you know, overarching handbook and then supplemental policies that belong with them. And then things are all in one place so that people know how to link back to it. Why are you laughing?
Well, if you, if, if the school committee posted them in a Google Doc, then every single time you updated a policy, it would automatically update. So they wouldn't have to go and see if you've updated a policy and then make the change. They would link to your Google Docs, which would have the ever-changing.
The link that I saw was to like a stagnant.
That's right now.
PDF, it wasn't like a Google Doc.
Right, so that's how they present on the website right now, is a PDF.
It was like a hazing policy that I had never seen before either. So again, I was just learning because I'm new, so going through it, but I, I have a list, I'm happy to share it. And then I don't, on the, our website, is that the only policy that's on there that would, they would link to, or?
School committee, the school committee policies on our website is the entire handbook. And then there's each file, when you go into the policy manual on the, on the website.
Right.
Each file has its own link.
Right.
So you just click, you just open them up. So probably nobody ever tried to link to that.
They're, they're PDFs.
If they're, if they're PDF documents, you would, there wouldn't be a change. So the doc would have to be a, a Google Doc.
Right.
And then it would be real-time updated.
Right.
PDFs are like a snapshot in time. So we'd be looking at a snapshot from whenever that happened to be 2017.
Who maintains those links, Ellen?
Um, on, on our website, on the policy manual?
Yeah.
So I send them to MASC and a woman at MASC sends it to a third party. So I send them to MASC and a woman at MASC sends it to a third party company who, they house our, they house our policy manual on their server. I just wouldn't want to be, I would not want to be responsible for having to update them on Google. And, and I don't know that we would want to have them in two different places, the policy, the actual policy manual.
Yeah, I think whatever we can do to make it.
Is there, is there a reason why we couldn't? I mean, I don't know, but is there a reason why we couldn't link to the link on our EBPS website?
No, and that's why I think your suggestion earlier was brilliant in the sense that understanding that the audience is the family, is the community, making a singular link and even condensing down that page and a half of appendixes of links would even make, you know, down to a half a page because most of it would go directly to that school committee. So, yeah, absolutely, totally great. Simple.
So the idea is we want everything to be updated and uniform. I think even, Amy had pointed out, sorry, Amy, that I think it would be nice if all the handbooks were in the same fonts, you know, so we're all under that, we're all the same district, right?
Sorry, I'm crazy about those things. Doesn't mean to sound nitpicky, but it was one of the things I noticed.
But I think to be fair to everybody, if we move this up on the annual calendar to at the latest June or maybe even May meeting.
Talking about the?
Handbook updates, so that if we can start looking ahead of those, because now it's like the final hour and school's next week, so.
Better get them in like May and then have June and like the last meeting in May. Well, if we had two meetings, I would say the last meeting in May and then have time to.
You guys aren't busy at all in May.
No, no.
No.
No, that's the problem.
Yeah, just making sure.
Everybody's busy every month, that's the problem.
I know, I know.
I think, I think that.
I agree with you, I think, right, it's just the timing of.
May's? Personally, May's a good time. When we review and look at our handbook, we look at our school council annually. And so we have to do that before our school council's end, right? So we talk about some changes, we're going to get better, we talked about maybe looking at more policies, not yours, but our procedures and protocols that we put in place that are school based, based on your policies, that have kind of sat there stagnant for a little while and we haven't really. We do that annually anyway with our councils. So we have to have this foundation and any recommendations and changes before the end of the year anyway. Right?
I think, first time through, I think we do that throughout the course of the year. I think it's finding the time to actually then physically make those changes.
Yep.
And documents change and people change and I think it would be great, we actually talked about this in the admin retreat, having time for the three of us to actually kind of get together to meet, to have those kind of conversations, which I think would then, you know, pull us together a little bit more. We'd be kind of on the same page with what our links look like and what our font looks like.
I was going to say what font we want to get with. It's your brand, right? So you have to, you know, create your brand.
And so I, my assumption is that, yeah, there's going to be some heavy lifting to get us kind of in alignment. And then on a go forward basis, it should be much easier. Not that there's a huge amount of time available anywhere along the line, but sooner rather than later. And so what I would suggest, when we get to the approval of this, you have to put out your handbook, I would say approve it as the notes that you've given us, the changes that are needed to be made. And maybe each one has a caveat that policies are updated on the, latest policies are on the school committee website. Just as a footnote caveat, so that if somebody's, you know, well, I don't know, this is from 2017, oh, they said the updated one is on, and we're in the process of updating. Something along those lines. So I know you don't want to start the year without a handbook. You have to have that. So that would be my suggestion, but that over these next month or two, whatever we can do to get it aligned up, referencing our single source policies so that it's latest and greatest. And I think from there we'll be okay. Does that sound okay?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Can we, are we, can we vote tonight if there's just, there's just a thing I noticed on the Mitchell one that would need to be changed, but can, can we vote and say with amendment?
Yeah.
Just for that. Ellen's name is just on twice with the list. You got it already? Already caught?
Yeah, yes, we wanted, it was more, the final edit, and I found four other pieces that we got to make sure of change to, but yes.
Perfect. And then I noticed that the, talked about the high honor roll but not honor roll.
I can actually show you.
I figured you were up here.
Right here, yep.
Perfect. So I just wanted to make sure that was.
It was a total undertaking. I don't know if you had a chance to line it up with the handbook that we.
Yeah.
Used off of it. It's about a tenth of the size of that. And it was a big undertaking to take it down to this piece.
Yeah.
And it was the timing, just, it came up last minute and I just wanted one more edit and, but I had to submit it. And there's five grammatical errors in there and they're killing me.
Well, I'm not your grammar girl, so I didn't catch those.
The front page looked so much better. It was, it was great.
I love your approach, Matt, was like make it, I forget exactly what you said, simple, readable, manageable. I think that's absolutely the way to go. Again, knowing your audience is, okay, somebody's got to read through this and if they want a quick reference, then you'll know where to go.
I appreciate that, thank you.
I had one other recommendation, and I don't know if this is helpful or not, but when the, the high school, are they, are they all in Google Docs now or is it just the high school one?
Ours is Google Doc.
Yours is Google, okay. So in the high school one, when Michael sent it over, the way that I looked through it was to look at previous versions, right? But from May till August, there was 50 previous versions. So to really honestly capture, because it creates a new version any change is made. So if you make a period and then you come back an hour later, it marks it as a new version. So a good way to capture changes and things like that is to, instead of making edits in edit mode, is to put it in suggestion mode. And when you go through a Google Doc in suggestion mode, it'll call out on the side the suggested changes for the entire document. So you can just look at one document, see all the suggested changes, and then you as, you know, the administration can go through it and say, okay, you check it and say, yes, we approve this change, or you delete it and the change doesn't happen. And then it makes it easier for everybody that's reviewing it to review it in one whole form.
Great. Good suggestion.
So we'll move on from that and as we get to these next couple of bullet points, I would just, my thought process was that I always looked at this August meeting as a time for us to kind of have discussions about some stuff that doesn't come up every meeting. And so that's why, and I know Becky and I had worked with Gina, with the educational philosophy and all, it made sense to me that, hey, all of these important statements should be compatible, they should all be related. And Amy and Becky were nice enough to take a look at the mission vision statement, which is why Liz passed it along to her team and now they're waiting for the school councils to get back to them. Is that, is that what we're doing, move on to them? Okay.
So just to clarify that.
Yep.
The administrative team, to our understanding, was in agreement with the district mission statement. The school council conversation is about sharing that and saying how their school mission statements will align with the district, understand, yeah? So they were satisfied with the recommendations for looking at the mission statement, that's a checked off. Now it's about how their individual schools will look at it, so it's all kind of threaded, threaded, that's not a word, together. So that's the council piece, not, not like we're waiting for them to move forward with the district mission.
Right?
Yeah? Did I summarize that correctly?
Just so ours are aligned.
Yes, that's right. Right, the whole point is to kind of have that thread with the vision of the graduate, with the mission statement, with the educational philosophy, so it's all intertwined.
Thank you. And speaking of vision of the graduate, which is the next bullet point, is that one, obviously, our main focus of the school committee is to produce graduated students who are prepared for the world to the extent that we can prepare them for. And so I think as a committee, it would be good for us to each year view, by the way, this is the vision of the graduate. Somebody's walking across the stage, you get their diploma, they said, oh, good, we spend time talking to them about how they communicate, how they interact with community. So, because that's what we're looking to produce. And I just think it's helpful for everybody to know, well, that's, that's what we're shooting for. And I just thought it's good to have it somewhere where we pause at one point in time to read through and say, okay, I understand, I understand what we're doing. When you go to graduation, you look and say, okay, I think all of these students are in a good place with regards to vision of the graduate. Is that fair, Gina?
Yeah, everything should come back to that.
Yep.
Can I add to that? That when we're looking at subcommittees and there already is a subcommittee in place for the educational philosophy, I think this would have to be a whole committee vote or something. But if we could, I don't know if we reword it, but if it's lumped in that the vision of the graduate, the mission statement, the educational philosophy, the things that are looked at and we vote on every year, if those were all lumped into one subcommittee, then there's already an annual I from there. So if there's something to be needed, so there's not, Amy and I were not a subcommittee, right? We weren't, we're not designated in that way formally, we just kind of said, we'll look at this. So if it's, if it's something we're voting on and approving yearly anyway, if it's lumped all in one, it seems to just check off a bunch of boxes in a nice neat way. So currently, it's the subcommittee for the educational philosophy and it would have some other lovely wording.
Great idea. Yeah, anything, again, to make us, you know, make it more efficient and effective. Next bullet point is the school committee, subcommittee's already touched on this. So if you can speak to your other members, figure out, and if you have questions, ask me, ask superintendent of bill, whatever, we'll, I'm not sure when this committee is going to start to meet. And we'll do the best we can. A lot of them are not obviously written in stone, but you have a pretty good idea that typically, like for instance, capital will start to meet after the first of the year, although there was some reference with the now special town meeting, I don't know if capital is going to have to meet before then, I don't know. And speaking of that, we still have to, have we heard back from Bob Looney? I think when we talked about capital, it was going to be sort of both Peter and Dan going to be on that, but we need authorization. Usually it's only one person, we need some reason, they said Bob Looney is the one that's got to approve that.
Yes.
But whatever that is, I'll reach out to both of you individually and I'll share with you at least what I had from last year and how I believe it's set up to work, just so that you don't sit there at the first meeting and, Dan probably has a pretty good idea, I don't know if Peter's been sitting, sat through it before, just to say, hey, this is typically how it works and see what happens.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I think I just wanted to say this again, I think Mrs. McKinnon says that working with the.
Yes, I actually have to reach out to them again. The last time I spoke to someone there, they had not heard from Mr. Looney yet.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I just want to, the principals are here, I want to see, is there anything that you want to hear from them or ask them or they want to say they, they start school next week or we all bring our students back in, teachers and the students next week? If you give them five minutes, I think they can give you a little bit of overview of what you're going to, what you're going to see or the rest of this week, what you're going to hear next week, and then we can let them go. I know they've had a long day and I'd like to get them home and so that they're fresh for tomorrow.
Okay. Excellent. Whoever wants to start?
I guess I'll start. So we had a step up day today and we had about 120 kids from the seventh grade in today, about 50 kids from the ninth grade, so it was great to see. We had about 10 staff members in to help out. Athletics has started fully, everybody's out doing their thing, volleyball, cross country, football, our soccer programs, field hockey. We had our band camp last week, so they were out in the heat and working on the Route 18 side. Mr. Shea purchased this, I don't know if it was you or the town, we purchased, I guess, a robot to paint the stripes and it was unbelievable. Coach Lane of our March of the Year was very happy to have their lines laid out and, you know, the right distances and what have you, so, but no, it's been a good, it's been a good start to the week. We're in good shape with staff and we have two more staff members to hire and then we'll be 100% staff for the year, so excited.
Great.
That's a great turnout for the seventh grade. That's like the majority of the class.
It was almost the entire class.
That's amazing.
It was great to see.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were looking at the rosters across the board with the step up days and it was impressive. We had a little over 100, I think, over at Mitchell and, you know, we're in a similar place, you know, we're really, it's all in the details at this particular point and just making sure that, you know, we're as nuanced and as exact as we possibly can, trying to anticipate as much as possible, making sure everything's, you know, crossed and dotted in place. And we did that with jump start and it went beautifully. We did that with step up day and it was, it was perfect. It was perfect. The curtain goes up for both of those and the curtain's going to go up next week. And just know your lines and don't trip over the furniture. It's, I haven't felt this prepared in a long time.
Great.
And, you know, I just, we're excited and I can tell that the staff is excited too. Their energy that when they came into the building today was palpable and the emails I'm receiving from them are just as energetic and energized. So it's a, promises to be a good year over at Mitchell.
Thank you.
Don't get too close to mine.
Do not echo for friends at home. But level up day was a success today too for kindergarten. We had a little over 90 students. We had every kindergarten teacher present, so they got their own students. And we had some supporting staff, which was excellent. And we're very pleased, they had a great day, they were happy doing those scavenger hunts, having a little stroll throughout Central School. So it was, it was a very successful day for us. And so I'd like to thank Jim McPartland who ran our level up day. She also ran our jump start last week, which was also very successful. And we had five weeks of ESY, the extended school year program in our building as well. And Sandy Tellis directed that for special education. So the summer has been a busy place, Central School, I'm sure your building's too, all summer long have been pretty busy. I will say we're excited, new teachers, we have two new teachers starting this year. They started on Monday and they, they'll be in all week and they were there today too with level up for the kindergartners, even though they're not their, they're students, but so it was great to see. And they're excited about setting up their classrooms, learning about our curriculum and expectations that will be coming next couple of days. Next week, Monday, all staff will be in. We're excited for open house on Tuesday night, five to seven, K to two, anybody wants to come, come join us. But yeah, we're looking forward to a really successful year, we're really excited about it, I will share. Our kindergarten enrollment has increased since the end of last year in springtime and we know that's always a moving target. At the end of the year, we were, you know, roughly approaching 130. Right now we're at 144 and we continue to enroll students, you know, obviously all summer long and throughout the year. But so we're pleased with that number. Right now, 144 is our largest class size. First grade and second grade are smaller than that. So we're happy to see it upswing because we sent 155 to you for grade three, so we're happy to see those numbers climb back up.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you all for what you do. I know the year is about to start off, people running through your, not running, we're coming through your building.
They'll be running.
It's going to be very exciting, very, very frenetic. I just want to convey our appreciation for what you do every day, whether it's in September or I know July and August, you have lots of things to do as well too. We appreciate it. And I know the students, when they get older, like my age, they'll look back and say, wow, those people are really good. I don't know if they'll know it today or tomorrow, but somewhere along the way, they'll realize how lucky they are. So thank you all. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you, nice to see all of you.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
You wanna take that with you, Matt?
No, I don't think you're gonna hear me from the phone.
It's the principal voice.
Your question?
Yes.
With regard to the mission vision and the vision of a graduate, are these still being worked on, or are these, like, are these grass?
That's, they've vetted through Superintendent, the principals, and now the principals wanted to get the feedback from the school councils, correct?
What you're looking at isn't what was, what Liz shared with her team at the retreat, but Michael did include it in his email, we, Becky and I did a, like a, not formal, but we did a Google presentation.
Amy did.
It was a little bit more robust, thank you.
I did not do that, Amy did all of that, that I'll leave to her.
So at some point, is it gonna come back to?
All the credit.
I guess my, my bottom line question is, is it gonna come back to us at some point for us to vote on?
Yeah, I think we said November.
Well, the aim would probably be November, because we are looking for the, it going through all the channels first, when things are coming to us like a package. But I do want to say, yes, I worked with Amy to create some language and stuff, this is all her hard work, so the kudos all go there. I just applauded her from the side.
I think that we stole something of yours on the bottom page, might be still, Liz.
That's what was shared with staff at the administrative retreat.
Thank you.
So we will come back, planning is November, keep it in your mind, it could be potentially a December, it's just depending on when they actually get to meet with their councils, and then if they need to come back for a follow-up meeting after that conversation, the goal is November.
And under the subcommittee thing, I just, one of the things I, I haven't had a chance to really discuss it, vetted out with Superintendent Legault, but from my perspective, I think it would be very helpful to have a safety subcommittee that just kind of stays abreast with, I know Superintendent Legault worked with your police chief, and all the latest and greatest things, unfortunately, the world that we live in, safety becomes more and more of an issue, so I, to me, it makes sense that we're connected to that, even as a subcommittee, but I'll, I'll talk more with Superintendent Legault about that, and maybe that's something we might suggest next meeting.
I think that's an awesome idea.
That would include the cybersecurity as well?
Yeah, I would just, it's a pretty broad umbrella, yes, I would think we'd all fall onto that. Okay, I think we've talked about everything else, the, just a quick update, I think, is the state budget finally signed off on? I know there seemed like there was good news there.
From the governor?
Yes.
Yeah, but they still, they're still, I mean, they're still going back and forth, I mean, there's still lots to go on.
I'm sorry, I thought I saw.
But she signed it, she signed it into effect, but there's always room for.
Okay.
You know, they're, they're still bustling around. I know the grants, we're still waiting to see grant money come out, so.
Okay, all right, I just thought.
They keep saying, look at your grant sheet, but I, have you seen the money? John, have you seen any?
Uh, no.
Yeah, it's not, it's not coming, so.
All right.
Dean, have you?
Well, well, some of the.
Competitive.
Competitive grants, no, but the.
Sorry. When do the, when do the grant?
Entitlement grants.
When do they typically come out?
Well, we know the entitlement grant amounts, but not the, if there's any new competitive grants, we don't know any, I haven't seen any new competitive grants come out lately. I think we're good, all set? The M A C workshops, we already talked about, action required by the committee, and to Ellen's point, where we typically would do this, we'd take a motion, take a second, and then discussion, so you make sure you jump in, will you want a discussion?
I will.
Okay. And my understanding is, since there's so many payroll warrants and A P.
Can we break out the payroll warrants, because there's two of us who can't vote on?
Oh, that's right, I was gonna do them all under one thing, you're right, okay. So do we break out them all out individually, or there's some that we can do?
Accounts payable, and then payroll.
So we have to do them all individually?
The payroll ones do separate from the accounts payable.
Oh, okay, so actions required after review on payroll warrants, 53 P S dated 6/30/24, 1 P S dated 7/2/24, 3 P S dated 7/17/24, 5 P S dated 7/31/24, and 7 P S dated 8/14/24. Have a motion?
I'll move.
Second?
Okay, and all in favor? I.
I abstain.
Abstain.
Abstain, two abstains, okay. You have that, Mike? Okay. A P, can we vote on them all together, or you want, it's, okay. So actions required after review of accounts payable warrants, 52 S V dated 6/26/24, 54 S V dated 6/30/24, and 4 S V dated 7/14/24.
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor? I. Okay, unanimous. The, to approve, approve the 2024-25 school committee meeting calendar, you have a motion? Second, okay, on, oh, discussion?
I'm gonna beat this dead horse. So I have a strong issue with going to one meeting a month, because we tried it in the past a few years, before COVID, I don't know what year exactly, and we found that it wasn't really working well, and so we went back to the two meetings a month, and then it was modified, and so we went one meeting in August, one meeting in September, two in October, one November, one December, and then two in January, February, March, April, May, and June. I feel like that really worked well, and so, I mean, I'm gonna go with what the will of the committee says, but I have a really big problem with going to one meeting a month, I feel like it's gonna be a lot.
But I understand.
Well, and one, one last point is for policies, when, so we have a two reading process, and when we vote on policies, well, it's gonna take us just longer to get them going.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, your problem is more your opinion that this is gonna be not work well, I mean.
Only from, I'm going by past experience.
Oh, past, okay, and that's fair, you've lived through that. What I would ask, at least from my point of view, give us a couple of months to look at this, if, if it's not working, we're gonna be the first ones to know it. If we don't feel like we're getting through things, or we're not really spending quality time on stuff, by all means, we'll, we'll discuss it and say, okay, starting on such and such a date, we'll amend that and go, go to more, more meetings, so if you can, you know, kind of go over the next couple and, and see how it works, and.
We probably won't notice it until around January, February, March, because we only have two, in the fall, we only have two meetings in October, or had, or whatever.
Right, okay.
What do you feel like the, what was the word you used, what was the thing that didn't work?
It was so many years ago, I don't know, I don't remember, but it just didn't work. We found that it was better having the business meeting with, talking about the finances and whatever we talk about, and then get the presentations, but, and now, I mean, I don't know what, when you were talking earlier, and you were talking about the calendar, like the year-long calendar that's coming out, so how do you, how do you plan to condense that, going, if we go to one meeting a month, how do you plan to condense the year-long calendar into only one meeting a month, and still have us get every, all the information that we need?
So for instance, for each of those meetings, let's say for in September, there'll be a finance presentation, there'll be a student services presentation, there'll be a strategic plan presentation, 10 minutes of presentation, 10 minutes of discussion, but we'll, we'll get that in advance, so if you have questions you want to send out ahead of time, so that either they're ready for it, or they can get back to you and say, no, that was 10 and not 12, or whatever it may be, the idea is that will help streamline it, that's the idea, the concept.
Okay, so I understand that concept, but the other, the other thing that comes to mind is getting questions in advance, yes, that's, that's a good, in theory, it's good, but then sometimes questions, people don't think about questions until there's conversation that's happening, like dialogue, so.
Fair enough.
I feel like, you know, some people might need to wait for the dialogue, and then they have a question, or, you know.
I think that makes sense, there's 10 minutes of the question you said after, so if something were to pop up, that could be addressed?
Oh, yeah, oh, no, that's exactly what it's there for. So again, I'd say, if it's not, if it doesn't work, we're gonna know it, we'll identify it, we'll try to modify, but if we can't modify to make it work, then we'll have to come back to the drawing board and, and do it differently, so, is that fair enough? I don't know, if everyone else feels that way, then, you know, just let me know, we'll reconsider, so.
I'm in favor of once a month, I feel like we are here for an exceptional amount of time every time we meet, so if we're meeting once a month with that, it's what our commitment is, it's, I feel like we have a responsibility outside of the meetings to do our homework in our due diligence about what's provided to us, and so I think if we show up informed, it also helps that process, that we're not waiting until we're here in the moment to be informed, I'm hoping that that makes a difference. It puts a responsibility onto us, Ellen, to your point, right, that if, if people are waiting only until the meeting to digest information, that comes back onto us as to what our responsibility is to have the once a month meetings. Well, also, part of the discussion with the once a month was that it allowed subcommittee opportunities to be coming together in the smaller group conversations, that would allow us more time for that, to have those detailed conversations to come back to the larger committee, where now, that's, that becomes more challenging. So I personally am in favor, I think I shared this in the beginning summer, late spring, I had done some research about this, looking at other districts, and how often did they meet, and what their agendas look like. We have very rich agendas, even when we're meeting twice a month. If you look on, if you go online at, I guess I shouldn't say about another district, right, you might find that they have like four bullet points, right, so I think we're very thorough, and when I'm, when I did that research and looking at what we're talking about, so I think there's a responsibility on us if we're gonna say once a month, that we're all agreeing that we're gonna do outside of meeting work to make that function.
I agree with Becky, I would just say that I think it would be a good idea to also lay out the subcommittee meetings, and have them scheduled, so that you knew that you were hitting those subcommittee meetings in appropriate cadence, so that you could have the appropriate discussions at these meetings.
Again, that isn't dictated, like, for instance, I can't, I'm sorry, you were gonna add something?
Sorry, Superintendent, I just wanted to point out one thing about the school committee calendar. So when you look at the May 20 date, I just wanted to point out, that would probably be the way we should be making this meeting.
Yes.
But I don't know if I can tell you that for sure, because I was trying to look, and I don't see on the town calendar, assuming May 17, that Saturday.
Right, we talked about this before.
It's, it's something, the second Saturday after the, I'm not gonna get it right, the wording is like, it takes some brain power, it's like the second Saturday after the.
First Monday?
Or Tuesday, I don't know, it's something bizarre, to figure it out, but we did look at that last time, and I think we.
Yeah, that's possible.
It is that.
And then had June be the reorganization?
It is, and, because we had talked about.
You didn't have a meeting in May.
We had talked about if possible to look at that meeting date, because the general feedback has been it's challenging as a newly elected member to have a two-day turnaround to come in to the meeting.
Oh, that's a great point. I did check with the town, the town meeting is May 12, it's the second Monday in May, the election is May 17, okay, and, because I was, one of the reasons I was asking is that, in order for them to have the town meeting and print the warrant and all, we need to have our public meeting about budget five weeks prior to the town meeting, which would put that beginning of April, which would do exactly what you said, would have two meetings in April, so, maybe that's, that's the amendment to it. So we'll, we'll skip the May 20 meeting and do two in April.
And then have no meeting in May?
Right.
And then we wouldn't reorg until June 17?
Right.
Yikes, I don't like that idea.
Why?
Well, you don't like a lot tonight, Ellen.
I think because that basically leaves us with, okay, so in effect, because I had talked to someone at the M A C about this before, is that like a long time ago, what do you do if you have no chair, what to do? So if we have, because it's like a lame duck period, or whatever, so if the chair doesn't run again, then, then it's the vice chair, and if the chair and the vice chair, then it goes to the secretary, and then if it's, so, I don't know, it just leaves us in a bad spot.
Okay. All right, so valid points.
Yep.
Without the anger, that was good.
No anger.
Just, I mean, maybe you could just have an abbreviated.
Right.
Reorg meeting the first week of June, or the, like, give it a little bit of time, give the new people who are elected.
Yeah.
A week, 10 days, and it's just a quick 15-minute meeting to reorg, and then you're done.
So if, so we would not have a May 20 meeting, we'd move it back a bit? Because again, to Ellen's point, there becomes a void there, I suppose.
We could still have May 20th and just make it an abbreviated meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just reorg and no agenda.
Yep.
Right. Well, the reorg, you might.
But didn't you, did you still feel like you had enough time to get sworn in and do what you needed to do before that?
Yeah, you just get sworn in on Monday, Tuesday, when you say the meeting, the election's on May 12?
May 12.
Oh, so that's like.
No, that's town meeting, election's May 17.
Oh, town, oh, May 17, so Saturday.
Just gonna talk about that.
I agree with you, Gordon and I were in the same position as you and Dan, in our election, and then was two days later, or three days later, whatever it was, we were in the meeting. So with working, that was challenging, fortunately, I had known ahead of time, that's part of what prompted us with looking at new member orientation stuff, to make sure that people are informed before they're, if they are elected, like, know that you have to block off time.
Maybe just update that orientation stuff, because nothing was handed out to me, so I didn't know that I had to go that following Monday to get sworn in until, like, that weekend?
Yeah.
So maybe just making sure that that information's up to date, people know, plan for a meeting, you know, this day, you need to get sworn in before that. When we went up to Town Hall, they weren't even ready to swear us in, because they still needed to certify.
Well, that's just that they have to certify, so you, you're so, right, you're looking at maybe like being really Tuesday before you actually can safely be sworn in.
Right.
And they, they apologized, I knew, I think they got Dan his packet, but they didn't give you one when you pulled your papers, or when you, whatever, so they apologized, they have it, they have it electronically, and they have it a paper copy as well, but, so, so where are we? So if we have an April, an April 15 meeting, and then we have an abbreviated meeting on the 20th, or you still think that's still too tight? If the election's on the 17th, that's Saturday, so by Tuesday, somebody would have to be sworn in.
I think it is what it is, because of Ellen's point.
Yeah.
I think there can't be that much time without someone identified as a chair.
Well, what I would suggest, I agree with you that you gotta have the main positions filled, but maybe you move the subcommittee allocations to the June meeting, I mean, as long as you have a chairperson in some hierarchy that, hey, if there's a problem, this is who it goes to.
Yeah.
I think the subcommittees can probably wait until June, that's my thought, so, okay, so this would be reorg, and then subcommittees here. That might work better that way anyway, because the subcommittees are usually so, gives, gives, whoever's gonna be the new chair, gives the opportunity to reach out to people and say, hey, is there any particularly of these subcommittees you're interested in, and we could try to line up that way? Okay, so we'll leave it this way with those notes. Is that okay, or anything else? Well, I think we took, the motion, we took the second, and we had discussion. We ready to vote? All in favor? Aye.
I'm still thinking. I will go, I will.
You want to?
You can say no, yeah, yeah, it's fine, you can say no.
You can vote no.
Oh, I know.
Lauren calls it.
I say no, but I will go with the will of committee and try to make it work.
Okay.
With the caveat, I will be.
She wants an asterisk.
Yes, with an asterisk.
Okay.
I will follow the will of the committee and make it work, or try.
I just want to make sure, so I am just gonna label it May 20 through.
Yes. Yep.
I'm sorry, Gordon, but real quick, before we move on, I apologize. The action required prior, I caught it as we were saying yes or no to it, the date on it is 7/14, but the date on the document is 7/17. So we've, we just voted for, I'm sorry, the accounts payable, it's the 4 S V dated 7/14/2024 is what's on our agenda, but the date on the document is 7/17, so just a heads up.
And which one was that?
Payroll, pay, accounts payable, sorry, 4 S V.
So 7/14, and it should be.
It's really 7/17.
7/17.
I would make a motion to approve the payroll warrant with the correct date of 7/17.
That's accounts payable.
Now, that's 4 S V.
Accounts payable.
Accounts payable warrant, what did I say?
You said payroll, but.
Oh, oh, accounts payable warrant dated 7/17, the correct date.
Okay.
I motioned it, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now it's official.
Amend that date. You got it, Michael?
Mrs. superintendent made the motion, Mrs. Phillips second.
Yep.
Okay. School committee calendar, we approved the, the new format for the meetings?
I'm okay with it.
All right, we need a motion?
I don't think you do. You're the chair.
Right.
You, it's, that's up to you, Gordon. You do not need a vote to change the, that around. That is, that is strictly up to the chair. If you'd like it, that's fine.
Well, let the record show, Mike. I'm a very all-inclusive leader, and I believe in democracy. I don't want to lead a bunch of angry people. I already got some struggles already.
No, and we have a policy on the format. It's pretty general, and that the chair sets it.
Well, I just thought if we'd all sign off on it, just so we're all on the same page, that's all, okay?
Can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is this, is this the area where you're talking about ten days prior to the meeting? You want the agenda?
Right.
Is that all the supporting documentation too?
Okay.
So that means we might not be getting up-to-date information if we're getting John's information ten days prior to our meeting. I mean.
Yeah, it's going to, it's going to catch at some point, though.
Right.
It's only ten days.
So what happens if, like, I got that donation within the ten-day period? Could something be added to the agenda that's not?
The idea is, as a committee, we want to be prepared.
Right.
To A, be able to ask questions ahead of time, and B, when we get here, to know what's on the table and to understand it. Something like that's pretty straightforward.
Right.
That, and when you get donations, we have to vote on them. You probably wouldn't want to hold it up.
You need to donate to accept donations. I've never understood that.
So when we're getting the ten days, we're getting a more formal draft, right? Because it doesn't actually have to be posted to the town, the ten days. So we're getting, we're just, you're saying we're getting as much information as possible. But in John's example, it can be added to an agenda prior to posting. It just maybe wouldn't give us as much time for questions or something before. But it's not formal in the town.
Yeah, the idea is that as committee members, you'll have time to digest it, have any questions. And if you see something that's missing that should be on there, by all means, bring it up, and we can, we can amend it before it gets actually formally posted. Okay?
Is that calendar days or business days?
Now, we're going to get angry.
Yes. We'll work with it. I know September's going to be really tough, because that's not that far away.
I say calendar days.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Gordon.
I said you're here every day.
We're going to see a new one of these?
September tenth could be.
It'll be combined into the.
Doing the agenda next week.
Okay.
All right, so we, we, because we have such a democratic, open-minded leader, we're going to vote on the agenda format, all right? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. I think we got a second and a motion. School committee goals, again, we're going to have to sign this separately, because we don't have a copy to sign. But a motion on school committee goals.
Second.
Discussion. Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
Goals. School committee operating protocols. Again, we'll have, so moved, we get a second. And again, that'll be something we'll have to sign. So maybe you stop by the office sometime over the next couple of weeks, and Michael, have him, you can just sign off on it, okay?
With the edits we discussed with regards to meeting agendas.
I'll give him, I'll give him those notes. So there is a couple of edits on the protocols, right? Or is that the?
Protocols.
Protocols, yes. Now that we have a different format, how we're often with meeting and things like that. There's a couple of things that'll have to be updated. Okay, all right, so do we approve on that? All in favor, we got on the protocols? Now.
Can we do a motion in a second?
We do.
We did.
Oh, yeah, we do.
The, approved the proposed changes to the twenty-four, twenty-five student handbooks for Central, Mitchell, and Junior/Senior High.
We break those out.
But I think, I'm sorry?
Break those out.
Aye.
We have to send them out.
You mean, break them out? You wanted to vote on them separately? Okay, so Central Elementary School with, we going to footnote that?
My recommendation would be to, if they did the work, is to approve them and let them start their school year, and then provide them with feedback for updates.
Update, yeah.
Understanding that they're very busy and need to move forward. Things have, I mean, if you look at the Central School handbook that they just changed compared to how it was, it's drastically better, even if some of the links are wrong. And Superintendent Legault said that the school policy supersedes, so I don't, I don't see any reason to hold it. Yeah, thank you. I don't see any reason to hold it up personally.
Okay, thank you. So Central Elementary School, we need.
So moved.
And.
Second.
Right, and discussion?
I'm fine with the Central School one.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
It's Central School. Gordon Mitchell School Handbook.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
Not hearing any?
Not hearing any. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
I don't want to hold them up, but I want to go through it. So I'll say yes, but I'm going to go through it, come back with, come back with stuff.
Okay, you got that, Mike? I think it sounded like a yes to me with a contingency.
Now, when we come back with.
It's a yes vote with another asterisk.
That need to.
We will fix it. So Eastbridge Warder Junior/Senior High School Handbook.
Same thing.
So moved. Second.
Second.
I have the same response.
Same response, okay.
Yeah, I just need to go through it and come back with my.
All right, so all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
With a footnote, got it. Okay. We need to appoint Superintendent Legault to the Reed's Collaborative Board of Directors for the current year.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And accept the donation of twenty of those OptiClean air scrubbers from the distribution, Distributor Corporation of New England.
Second.
All in favor? Or any discussion?
Was there any cost to receive them?
No.
Everything was, that's awesome. No, other than it's awesome.
It's awesome, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, I think, yes, oh, you need those back.
I need these back.
And I think the last thing, yes. Did you have something else?
You need to sign that, but it can be after.
And then the, the last piece of item, oh, just a reminder, if you have time, sign those warrants and all that you've already approved. And I think I then just need a motion to end this meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Everybody's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'm sorry we ran so late. It'll be better. Thank you all.